All right, folks, I got seven o'clock coming.
Yep, okay.
Good evening and welcome to this evening's city council meeting. The date is January 28th, 2025, and the time is 7:00 PM. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikhail is absent. Bud Matts?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Veneziano?
Here.
Boucher?
Here.
Reyes is absent. Kohler?
Present.
With five present and two absent, there is a quorum this evening. First order of business is to approve minutes from a previous meeting, our January 14th, 2025 city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you Aldrin Kohler for the first and Aldrin Boucher for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and those meeting minutes are approved. This evening, there is no mayor's report. Are there any ward reports this evening? All right, seeing none, at this time, the meeting will be open to the public for 20 minutes. And in order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials, and to guarantee to the elected officials in an ordered and dignified form in which to conduct the city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disturb or disrupt the orderly proceedings of the city council. Per rules of procedure, the public is to address the city council, and the fact that no member of the city council responds does not mean that the city council, or any member thereof, agrees or disagrees with the comment. In order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. First, any person who seeks to address the city council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. That each person addressing the city council shall state their name for the record, and each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes in order to address the city council. We do have four signatories on the sign-in sheet this evening, and therefore, we will be adhering to the five-minute time period. When there is 30 seconds left in that time period, deputy city clerk will make a note of the final 30 seconds, and we ask that you then please stick to that timeframe. Questions and/or commentary shall be limited to city business, and comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officers present. And discussion shall take place in a professional manner, which displays mutual respect and profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. That said, our first signatory on the sign-in sheet is Kinga Matea? Yes, please, please come forth to the podium.
Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening. So, I'm not really sure what's happening, to be honest with you. I received the note, and first note that I received was, I think, a couple of months ago. That seemed like a voluntary, and I disregarded notice, but I received three more notices within the last month about, I guess, joining the Rolling Meadows. And with my neighbor, we are very surprised by this notice, and we are not really interested. So, we would like to also ask if we would have some time to, so we can contact a lawyer. We're just totally surprised by this notice. We're not interested. So, I don't know. We have, we just both paid for the well repair. We have, we just repaired the septic system. We've invested thousands and dozens of money in that, so we are set for the next 10 years. And we are not looking forward to any other expenses, to be honest with you. So, yeah. It's a new experience for us, so I don't know even what I'm...
For the public comment, the council doesn't respond? You just have the five minutes to be able to state your statement?
Yeah, and another thing that we were wondering, how come Rolling Meadows is interested in our two houses instead of Palatine? So, yeah, that's all I have, but we are both not interested in joining. And if that's needed, I don't know what the procedure is, you know, that we should hire a lawyer for that, or I don't know. It's a new experience for both of us, to be honest with you. So, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, looks like Mr. and Mrs. Zaloa?
We are together in the same problem. We're not interested in the annexation.
Yes, please, please come and speak.
She's terrible, really. She, I would say...
I can help him.
Yeah, because we have the together notice from the public.
I understand. If you just wanted to state that for the record, so it's part of the record and in the microphone, so that we have...
My name is Zalok Voychek. I am not interested in the annexation to Rolling Meadows with our house.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Our third signatory on the sign-in sheet is Mr. and Mrs. Solano? Ayes, please approach.
My name is Abbe Solano. I live at 2301 Rowling Road. I'm the homeowner, too. Like Kinga, I was also really surprised considering that we just purchased the home a few years ago. So, we were unaware as well that we were unincorporated Cook County, and all the implications that that comes with. So, I did want to mention just that point, that I agree, and I understand where the confusion is coming from. But I think my thought has been more logistically what the implications or impact of joining Cook County officially would look like, sorry. Yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Is this just related to the annexation that I commented, or can it be something separate?
So, you have five minutes to make a statement about the items that we have here, so you can...
Oh, okay, yeah, no, it's unrelated to that, but I didn't know that I was unofficially, or yeah, unofficially Cook County or whatever. I just wanted to mention that we're a young family in the community, and I grew up in Arlington Heights, never really knowing how wonderful Rolling Meadows is until the recent years. And my family and I love Rolling Meadows, and have made a lot of, you know, community connections and friendships. And as a concerned resident of Rolling Meadows, wanting to keep my community safe, I did call the, a phone number here once and was transferred twice to leave a message about the unsafe crossing of Rowling Road and Campbell. I never heard back, and I was deeply concerned. So, I just wanted to express that as a resident here, that that was, never returned, got a call back as a concerned mother of two young children, and for my neighbors, too, that often cross there, and people are just flying down Rowling Road. So, with that being said, I know that there was a recent accident there where someone passed away. So, I just called and was like, I love my town, like, how can I propose a safe crossing there? Like, there is a safe crossing right by the Sunrise Park in Arlington Heights. Never got a call back, so I just did want to take that opportunity today since I came representing my family and my community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next person on the sign-in sheet is Ms. Roxanne Summer.
Good evening, everybody. Seen me before. I live at 5550 Aster Lane in Rolling Meadows. And first, as I pretty much always do, but it comes from my heart, thank you every one of you for helping us and watching over us and being there for us. God bless you all. Now, the reason I'm asking is I contacted one of the aldermen earlier this week. I was interested because of all the craziness that's going on in Washington with the new administration that I wanted to know how Rolling Meadows officially stands on the immigration topic. I don't expect the response, because I know what this is, but I want to put it out there because I would like to know, where do we stand? So, if someone somewhere could, you know, contact me and let me know. Is it everywhere a sanctuary city, or what? What's the deal? Okay, so, thank you so much. God bless everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, this concludes the public comment section of the city council meeting, which now brings us to our pending items. The first pending item that we have this evening is Item A, Ordinance Number 25-03, which is to amend the city code in order to reduce the number of video gaming cafes from, video gaming cafe GC licenses issued in the city of Rolling Meadows, and reduce the number of Class A2 liquor licenses issued in the city of Rolling Meadows. Isabella's Cafe, located at 5540 New Wilkie Road, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Aldrin O'Brien for the first and Aldrin Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance? Okay, hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to Item B, Ordinance Number 25-04, to approve opting out of the Cook County paid leave ordinance and rendering the county paid leave ordinance inapplicable to employers located within the city of Rolling Meadows in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Aldrin Boucher for the second, and Aldrin O'Brien. Aldrin Boucher for the first, and Aldrin O'Brien for the second. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance? All right, hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to Item C, Ordinance Number 25-05, to approve a lease agreement with the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System, NIPUS, for the former fire station located at 2455 Plum Grove Road, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Aldrin O'Brien for the first, and thank you Aldrin Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item D, Ordinance Number 25-06, is to approve an ordinance annexing certain property to the city of Rolling Meadows and automatically zoning said property in accordance with law. And I have the PIN number as well on here, so I'm going to ask that the deputy city clerk make sure that I'm reading this into the record. So, we're at 1736 South Meacham Road, PIN number 02-34-202-016.
That is correct.
Thank you. In for second reading, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Aldrin Boucher for the first and Aldrin O'Brien for the second. Before we open this up to discussion for the council members, I did want to have city staff provide, I think, a little bit more background as to what the annexation process is, and also the difference between the current status of the properties that we'll be seeing this evening, which are all currently already located within Cook County, and the incorporation that we're discussing here is within a municipality, and that Cook County has a stronger request for all of the municipalities to be able to ultimately incorporate those unincorporated parcels. So, I'm looking either to City Manager Rob Sabo? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. To summarize, as you had stated, Cook County, a number of years ago, undertook a study of unincorporated areas and ultimately determined, and it was a recommendation made, that unincorporated areas be phased out and annexed into municipal boundaries that are adjacent to those unincorporated areas. Cook County spans a very large geographic area, and the law enforcement response for Cook County is the sheriff's office. So, for example, a single individual unincorporated property located within the boundary of Rolling Meadows, even though it's unincorporated, if someone were to call 911 for a police response, that police department that's responding to that call is the sheriff's office, not the Rolling Meadows Police Department. That sheriff's unit may be coming from somewhere far away from our area, in another unincorporated area, whether it's in Glumberg Countryside, which is near Northbrook and Deerfield, or further down south, near Des Plaines. In addition to that, right now, for any building permit or zoning applications, all of those types of applications for unincorporated properties have to go downtown to the Cook County Planning and Zoning Office. Once again, Cook County has determined and is saying that because of the localized spread of these individual parcels, it makes more sense, given the continuity with the neighboring properties, for these types of things to be handled by municipalities. Overall, it's, at the end of the day, about government efficiency. And so, as we had talked to our county commissioners and county representatives about annexation and what the recommendation is from the county, we observed within the Rolling Meadows boundaries and within our actual, within the incorporated areas, that there were these smattering of about 11 parcels, I believe, across the community, 11 or 12 individual parcels that were unincorporated standalone parcels. Under the state law, parcels that are under 60 contiguous acres can be annexed by municipality through the approval of an ordinance, which is known as involuntary annexation, or a property can voluntarily annex into a community. As we looked at the different properties on our boundary and working with our Cook County representatives, we ultimately conducted a study to determine that those properties that we're already providing road services for, so for example, salting, plowing, properties which we are responding to from our fire department, and also patrolling by our police department, are paying their share of taxes to Cook County but deriving benefit from the services that we're providing and that the neighbors are praying for. And so, we've ultimately made this recommendation to move forward with the annexation into the community for these specific parcels. As the properties, if ultimately are annexed, what happens is that the property owners, for example, if you're in a well or that you have a septic system, are not forced into tapping into the city's water system or sewer system. That is an optional decision that a resident can make. The benefit that you do get, though, however, is that if you ever were, if you ever wanted to do that, as a resident, you are paying at resident rates for that benefit, for those services, so water, sewer. In addition, we provide our own in-house refuse services. It's a take-all program, so anything that a resident would put out to the curb, our in-house services would come and pick up for them. Once again, it is an efficiency element, because right now, an individual parcel has a privatized garbage truck coming down a city street, which garbage trucks are amongst the most destructive to city streets due to the weight of those trucks. By having a city truck, which is already passing by, collect that property, it's one more benefit, not only to the resident who is receiving the service, but overall to the city. The residents themselves ultimately also are joining the Rolling Meadows Public Library as part of that transition. And one of the primary big changes is that right now, in the tax bill, they are a part of the Inverness Fire Protection District. However, under an agreement that we have with Inverness Fire Protection District in the Palatine, the village of Palatine, right now, Rolling Meadows responds to a number of these properties already under a mutual aid, shared services agreement. On the tax bill, the Inverness Fire Protection District comes off, and then the city of Rolling Meadows portion of the tax bill covers the fire protection services, which we then are providing. So, I'm happy to answer any other questions or provide any additional information.
Thank you very much. With that, I'm opening up the floor to the council for any questions or comments regarding the annexation process. Yes, Aldrin O'Brien?
Well, I was just gonna say, thank you, Mayor Sabo, for that. And also, too, just to reiterate, it's in the materials for tonight, is it would be no disruption to first responder service. There's outstanding... service. There's outstanding analysis that's been included tonight, where the response time would actually be the same, or way underneath, I believe, I don't want people, Chief Sutter on the, way below the national standard of four minutes, we're in, within two to three minutes. So there is all that additional data that council's been provided for, as well as on the city website, on how it would not negatively impact, because that was concerns that we discussed as a council over the last several months, after Cook County came to talk at one of our public forums about this initiative they have. So just to, to reiterate what Manager Sabo said, it would, would not be an impact for any type of first responders, because we've, we've taken a look at that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Aldrin Budmats.
Thank you, Ms. Ma... Mayor. Um, so I understand that we already voted on this the first reading two weeks ago, but when were the notices sent out? Because this is the first we're hearing of any opposition to this.
Uh, I'm looking to our Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director on the notice timing.
Uh, and I, in turn, will look to, uh, the city attorney.
Ah, yes.
The notices, um, I'm gonna pull up the ordinance here, because the ordinance does indicate that the notices were provided with respect to the taxpayers applicable to the property. The statute requires that the taxpayers receive no less than 15 days' notice before the annexation. I believe that the taxpayer notice went out on, um, January 14th and January 17th. Those were the date that they were actually served, because they were served via hand delivery, via certified mail, and via regular mail as well. So that was, um, within the timeline prescribed by the state law.
Okay, thank you.
Other notices were also required to various, um, taxing bodies, including the Fire Protection District, the Library District, and the corporate authorities of Cook County. And all of those other notices that were, were required by law were accomplished as well, including publication notice. And actually, the publication notice went out on the 14th and the 17th. I apologize. And, um, the notice to the taxpayers went out before that, so it was before 15 days.
Okay. And the sheriff served to them by hand within the fif...
The, the...
More than 15 days ago?
The police department actually conducted...
Thank you.
The hand delivery, yes.
Any additional questions, Aldrin Budmats? Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the council at this time? All right, seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to Item E, Ordinance Number 25-07, to approve an ordinance annexing certain property in the city of Rolling Meadows and automatically zoning said property in accordance with law. Uh, again, a deputy city clerk, as I read out the PIN, will just confirm, I have 1036 and 1048 Plum Grove Road, PIN numbers 02-27-203-009.
That's correct.
As well as 02-27-203-010.
That one's also correct.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Aldrin Kohler for the first and Aldrin Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Looking at Item F, Ordinance Number 25-08, to approve an ordinance annexing certain property to the city of Rolling Meadows and automatically zoning said property in accordance with law. Again, these addresses are 1320 and 1384 Vermont slash 388 Emerson. So the PIN numbers that I have associated with those are 02-27-404-002.
That one's correct. That one's correct. And that one also is correct.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Aldrin O'Brien for the first.
Second.
And thank you, Aldrin Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion? Yes. A clarification, go ahead.
Yes, just a clarification for the record, when the notices were hand delivered to the taxpayers, uh, related to all of these annexations, and it was January 10th, 2025.
January which day?
January 10th.
January 10th.
January 10th, 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional clarifications for the record at this time? Okay. Are there any other comments or questions from the council regarding this item? Hearing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item G, Ordinance Number 25-09, to approve an ordinance annexing certain property to the city of Rolling Meadows and automatically zoning said property in accordance with law. The address I have is 59 Bryant Avenue, PIN number 02-27-207-015.
That one's correct.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Aldrin O'Brien for the first and Aldrin Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item H, Ordinance Number 25-10, to approve an ordinance annexing certain property to the city of Rolling Meadows and automatically zoning said property in accordance with law. The addresses I have are 2205 and 2301 Rawling Road, PIN numbers 02-26-406-006.
That's correct. That one's also correct.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Aldrin, uh, Boucher for the first and Aldrin Kohler for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This now brings us to, uh, items in for first reading. We have an ordinance, uh, for Item I, Ordinance Number 25-00, which is to amend Section 6-37A of the city code in order to reduce by one, and increase by one, the maximum number of Class A1 liquor licenses issued in the city of Rolling Meadows for Mirage One Incorporated doing business as La Mirage slash IZI Lounge LLC at 3223 Algonquin Road in for first reading. Is there a motion to consider the ordinance for first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Aldrin O'Brien for the first.
Second.
And thank you, Aldrin Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Aldrin Kohler.
So this is just a question, is this because of change of ownership, or what's, what's going on here?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, uh, or requests for clarification? Seeing none, the question is, shall, shall this ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance will be moved forward for second reading. This brings us to new business. Uh, for Item J, I'm looking for a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for January 28th, 2025. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Aldrin O'Brien for the first and Aldrin Kohler for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the, um, payment of bills on warrant? Hearing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this warrant is approved. This now brings us to our consent resolutions for the evening, which consist of five items, Items K through O. Does any alderperson wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolution? Seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the five resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Aldrin Kohler for the first and Aldrin O'Brien for the second. These consist of Item K, Resolution Number 25-R-04, to approve the purchase of one... Thank you. Oh, technology. All right, continuing with our consent resolution for the evening, Item K, Resolution Number 25-R-04, to approve the purchase of one 2025 Ford F-150 Lightning Pro Super Crew Pickup Truck replacement of RM 334 slash C301 through National Auto Fleet Group in the amount of $51,977.08. Item L, Resolution Number 25-R-05, to approve a hold harmless agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for work performed within the state of Illinois right-of-way. Item M, Resolution Number 25-R-06, to approve the purchase of a 2026 Auto Car Hail Refuse Truck replacement of RM 368 slash T336, a 2017 Auto Car Hail Refuse Truck from EJ Equipment in an amount of $381,574.08, and declaring as surplus property an existing refuse truck for trade-in. Item N, Resolution, Resolution Number 25-R-07, to authorize a contract with Dominion Lighting and Solar in a not-to-exceed amount of $47,769.08 for the consultant procurement and installation of seven Level Two electric vehicle chargers located at City Hall. And lastly, Item O, Resolution Number 25-R-08, to authorize the fiscal year 2025 locating services contract with U.S. Infrastructure Corporation, U.S.I.C., in a not-to-exceed amount of $65,000.08. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, these resolutions are adopted. Uh, this now brings us to other business and reports. There are no mayoral appointments or proclamations and no cities clerks, city clerks report, um, which brings us to staff reports. And as a reminder, there is no discussion during the staff reports. For community items of interest, I will defer to City Manager Rob Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor. The city's 2025 calendar of community events is now available on the city's website, Facebook page, and posted at City Hall. Be sure to reserve these dates to enjoy the concerts, parades, fests, and other special events in Rolling Meadows throughout the year. The city's annual Holiday Light Recycling Program will end on Friday, February 7th, 2025. Holiday Lights' extension cords and power strips can be dropped into collection boxes outside of City Hall at 3600 Kirchhoff Road. For details about this program, please visit alginrecycling.com. Rolling Meadows Public Works has partnered with the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County to launch a new Recycle Coach webpage, a user-friendly service to answer your refuse and recycling questions in a few clicks. Quickly find answers to know what can be recycled and what should be placed in the trash, and more. Visit cityrm.org for more information. That's all this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have some very exciting news from, uh, the government, Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, or the GFPA. Um, and for that exciting news, I will defer to our Director of Finance, Molly Talkington.
Thank you, Mayor. It is exciting. We once again received the award for our financial reporting. That's our annual audit report. Um, this is to provide transparency to our residents, to bondholders, to even the council, anyone who'd like to read it. Um, and it shows what we did in the year, right? We look at our fiscal year 2023, which is what we got the award for. We see what we budgeted, we see what we spent, and how we did in each of the funds and where we stand. So this is an opportunity for everyone to conceive financially where the city is at and get recognized for the good work that we've done with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, lastly, we have our February 11th, 2025 City Council Draft Agenda, which is in the packet, and if the council has any questions regarding the agenda, to please contact City Manager Rob Sabo. At this time, are there any matters not on the agenda this evening? Yes, Aldrin Boucher?
Um, the library would like you, would like the community to know that State Representative Nicole Grassi will hold office hours in the Rolling Meadows Library on both February 4th and March 4th from 3 to 5. And they are very excited for that opportunity to host her, um, to ask for questions that any of our citizens might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any other matters not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, I would now like to entertain a motion to go into closed session under Section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act Regarding Personnel and under Section 2C11 of the Open Meetings Act Regarding Pending Litigation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Aldrin O'Brien for the first.
Second.
And thank you, Aldrin Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding going into closed session this evening? Hearing none, the question is, shall the, uh, council go into closed session? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. Thank you.